There's no audio? How about now? Oh, no. Um, yes, apparently I was having audio issues. Um, no, I was not trying to gaslight anyone there. I joke, there's always something with these. Can you hear me now? I'll use that question from the old Verizon ads. Um, Emol, thank you so much for letting me know. Um, a shout out to you, my friend, for keeping me honest here. Uh, that was not intentional. Thank you, Kristin. I will back the truck all the way up. Um, so we are here to talk about our last ACP 420 session. Uh, hopefully that is the only technical glitch I have today. Um, but it's been about 14 weeks, I think, of us working together on this, certainly before team. Um, but when I started, this was just for me to study. If y'all were here for the first session, it was only half an hour. Um, which I look back on and I, it's just amazing that we've been together this long, working on this. Um, some of you have earned this exam in that time or in the certification, which is amazing. Um, but today we're going to review as much as we can. So we're going to use kind of the last minute, last seen study, but also I'll go back and remember what I learned about the exam or what, uh, my recollection of it. Uh, but please take a minute to think through questions that you have about it. Uh, things that you want to dig in more on, things that you're confused about, um, or just want to understand better with this group. I've got some ideas of what I want to talk about just based on my experience with that exam. Um, but please drop your questions in that chat. Um, we're going to pop into our slides. Actually, maybe I'll skip the slides because the only slide I really have uh, is that reminder, you know, please like and subscribe, but use the chat. The chat will be very important, especially in the review to answer the questions that you have. Uh, and then we're going to be just reviewing everything. That is our topic. Um, now I will also talk a bit about taking the exam itself, what that experience is like. I've spoken a little bit about that. And then I'll also talk about the next ACP we're going to be doing, which, um, it's already up on Bevy and I'll start building out all the LinkedIn, uh, sessions. Uh, before I forget, there won't be a session next Monday. I'm going to use that time to build out the next cycle of learning. And I've got, I think nine or 10 weeks, uh, for that next ACP. Uh, but to our review, um, here we are on Atlassian Learning. And this is the breakdown of the exam. So if you're looking at taking the exam and you aren't sure what you should study, or if you feel like you don't have a lot of time and you got to figure out what you want to, you know, work on. This is where I would start. I would take a look at this and ask myself, which of these, um, you know, should I focus on? And if you can't tell, pick the one of the biggest number next to it. Um, now I say that because, for example, customer facing features is 21%. If you can nail that, that's a fifth of the exam. So if you have to choose, pick the one that has the higher percentages next to it. Um, there's some like configuring, reporting or managing the knowledge base that do show up on the exam. But if you don't know where you should focus your time and you have limited time, pick the ones that just have more. The other thing that you will be very helpful is grab this PDF. And I'll share it right here. This is a much more detailed version of what we just saw. So this will give you some bullet points on what they mean by defining users. Um, this would have helped me out because there's a lot about, or at least my particular exam had translations, um, which I have never used. So we can do things like changing the default language and managing translations and how does that work? And we had covered that in here, but I was just not very familiar with it. So if you have the time, grab this PDF and just go down line by line and see what you might be missing or what you don't understand. This will be a great pointer for you. And again, you can dig into those ones that have a higher percentage of the exam um, to figure out what you might be missing or where you might need to dig in. Um, you can create JSM projects with shared configurations. Oh, interesting. Uh, Suzanne had tripped over it when you deleted the original. Oh, no. Huh. I was unaware of that. The portal configuration is also shared, so we're all learning something new. We'll see if we can figure that one out today as well. Um, there are also other study resources. I'll just give a quick plug out to the Discord server we've got going. That server isn't just for studying for certifications. My goal is it to be, is it for, to become a place where we can just go to connect about Atlassian stuff. So if you're doing the 420, great spot to go, but if you have any questions or ideas or want to share something, also a great place. Uh, so this PDF will be a great guide as you're considering, when do you take this exam? Um, I think this was updated in April, so this is the updated version. Um, and that's another call out. If you all remember in early April, they changed the exam on us, uh, which we learned live in one of the sessions. You can go see the recording when I uncovered that fun fact. Um, so just double check if you're looking at other content out there, that it's for the updated version of the exam, the one from April of 2025. I would hate for y'all to study the older one. Um, I'm sure it's still good information, but it won't line up exactly. Sorry, I just gotta pour some more coffee. Um, all right. So this PDF will be useful. This doesn't give you the answers, but it lets you know what you need to be able to do, uh, which is important. And let's see if we can find shared configurations in, in here. Nope. The word shared only shows up once. I was hoping for an easy win there. Um, the other thing that we'll dig into right now, if we scroll down and go under prepping for free, and something that I found very, very useful at the bottom. Uh, I lied. Oh, here it is. Um, certification prep resources. In the week before my exam, I spent a lot of time in here and we're going to go through as many of these as we can. But this is kind of the high level, what you need to know about each session, each section. For example, you should just know who, who can create a JSM project. Um, we'll dig into customer permissions right now because that's something that I'm constantly forgetting. Um, it mainly revolves around being able to like share, I'm in the wrong spot here and I, um, share their requests with other people. So I'll just pop into project settings. And I'm looking under customer permissions. Um, I had a couple of questions about this and again, my background is not being, uh, I've been a, a project admin, uh, but never an org admin. And I've never had to really deal with customer permissions, like I haven't used organizations very well. Um, so on the exam, we need to understand organizations and how they impact the ability to find other people. Um, in my experience, it hasn't been a problem because we've just had one organization. Although there are companies that use organizations to break out like customer groups and you don't want customers seeing each other's requests. Um, that can be embarrassing at best, or it can be, uh, a bit of a nightmare at worst if they're competitors or if there's other, you know, legalities involved with that. Now, this first one is just ability to request, uh, put in requests. Typically I leave this open. Um, but you can also lock it down. So this is the first level of like customer permissions. You can say only people invited can put in requests. Um, typically in environments I've worked in, it's been open. Um, anyone who can get to the portal can submit requests. Although you do have that option to restrict it, so you might see questions around this. Why can't a particular customer, or why can't someone put in a request? And it might be because the channel access was restricted. Um, you will also see questions around configuring something. So it won't say go to channel access and change it. It'll just be something like, uh, you know, configure customer permissions. Uh, Emol, I'm going to keep talking, but I'll see if I can solve this while I'm talking about what's going on. Um, now the bottom bit, this is the confusing part for me, is sharing between organizations. Um, this can be set. One of three options, you can let them search for other customers in their orgs. So this is kind of the most restrictive. This is saying the customer can only look for other people and organizations they're in. Um, and that I think is the default. Um, there is a global setting which I'll open up. And I'll come back to this in a moment because this is a lot of text and this to me is really intimidating and scary. Uh, but that lets us set the default. So the default in this instance is this top one. You can only look within your org. The middle one is the same thing, but lets you enter email addresses of other customers. So this one's a bit more expansive. I know, uh, Chad's email, I can type it in and add him to the request. This last one is the least restrictive. It's saying I can find other customers just in my project. I don't have to know their email. I can find them. Um, and this is the one that can be challenging if you don't want customers uh, to see each other essentially, or to know about people outside their org. Uh, because it means they can just click a dropdown and see a list of people and maybe the org they're in. Now going back into the site admin, these are the Jira admin settings. This is a lot more control over what can go on, what are the, the permissions and the configuration of it. Um, we've got stuff in here like can agents add announcements to help centers? Um, and if we recall, we can have that bar up at the top. Um, so this is where I can configure that. Um, do, do, do you, here we go. Can agents manage organizations? This is another one that might come up. Again, there's a lot about organizations because that controls kind of what customers can see and do, or you know, how customers can enter requests. Um, so here I'm allowing agents to be able to add and remove organizations and manage organizations. I can restrict that though, so only admins can. So we may see questions on the exam around, you know, can an agent add an organization? Or if one agent can, why can't they? Uh, another one around organizations is sharing email requests um, with the org. So I can say yes or no. Um, and there's a call out right here. Uh, there are no gotcha questions. However, there will be questions that unless you know, it's going to be confusing as all heck. Uh, and this is one of them. Uh, again, like no guarantees if a question around this comes up. Uh, but it's saying if I'm in more than one organization, the email request isn't shared. So that's something we just have to know around how email requests are shared. And if you don't, it's almost impossible to answer that question. Um, so if you're on the exam and you get a question like that, you can't answer. You have the ability to flag it. And so that'll remind you later, come look at it. Pick an answer that seems the best at the time, flag it and then keep going. That's good for two reasons. Your brain will kind of keep thinking about it. But also there might be another question that gives you hints or more information. I have definitely had questions later in an exam that helped me answer prior ones because it gets me thinking about it differently, or it mentioned something I had forgotten. All right. So that's all the customer sharing stuff. And again, this for me was challenging on the exam, just because I'm not familiar with it. The companies I worked with happened to not use organizations. Um, again, please stop me. I've just kind of got a talk track in my head if you want me to dig into other things. Um, the next thing I remember, and I'm curious, has anyone used translations? For JSM? Uh, and I'm asking because it's a feature and I've never personally seen it used. And that also caused me challenges on the exam. Uh, in project settings, we've got, oh, where did it go? Nope, knowledge base, I'll come back to. Language support, here it is. Um, so projects will have their own default language. In this case, it's US English. Uh, and this can be changed in, uh, settings. Never used, yep. I have worked at multinational companies that have people who speak different languages and I don't think we've ever used this feature. Um, I can see use cases, especially if you have a public facing JSM portal, that this would be extra useful. Um, but basically we can go in and just add one of these languages. And these all tie into someone's preference and I'll talk about how customers can set it in a moment. Uh, I picked English, United Kingdom, um, because that's in English and I can understand that. Uh, but here we're seeing mappings of what the thing is called in English and what we would want it to be called if someone picks this other language. So the phrase JQL JSM translates to this phrase. Uh, and it's everything customer facing can be translated. So each of my request types has its own translation for everything. And you'll see these little, uh, yellow icons are telling me, hey, it's not completed. Uh, but you can see there's quite a bit in terms of what can be translated. It's all the notifications. It's anything a customer will see. I had a number of questions around translation. It was partially how to set it up. And again, project settings, language support. Um, some of it around the default language, but as customers, we can go in. And under account settings, we can change our own, uh, preferred language. So account preferences where I can change this. And this list of languages should match what we just saw, uh, on the Jira service project. So if I were to come in here and select English UK, Jira would notice show me the English UK translation of those words and phrases. Now, so pointing that out because that tripped me up. And that's something I distinctly remember struggling with on the exam. And again, it's because I've never, I've never used it. So I didn't even know where to go if I wanted to change my own preference. So it's under account preferences. Uh, and the language someone sees is their own preference. Um, like as an admin, I don't believe I can go in and change Emol's settings. Uh, another thing that came up quite a bit for some reason was information on the knowledge base. If we go back to our topics very quickly, this is 5% of the exam and it felt like I got more than 5% of my questions around it. Um, basically it's looking at how to connect Confluence to JSM. Um, which is just a single rocker, like a single click. Uh, so under knowledge base, we can just link spaces. And here I can see all of the spaces. Um, this, uh, these options who can view and edit are controlled at the instance level. So if we go under products and settings, so on my gear up at the top, this is where I can change who can view and who can edit. Uh, under knowledge based permissions, by default they're off, which is why if I go back to my JSM project, they were grayed out. But I can change these to let, to give project admins the ability to turn it on. So this is an example of like a two-step permission. I, as the site admin can allow this to be turned on, but then individual project admins have to go in and flip it on. So there can be some inconsistency with the setup. Project admin one. In this case, maybe Chad will decide to turn it on, but maybe Emol does not. But I should now be able to go back and say, anyone who's logged in can go in and change this. So back to my settings, looking for knowledge base. And now I can say, anyone who's logged into the service project can view articles. Now the difference between these two, the first one requires a Confluence license. And so there could be a, a reason you only want licensed Confluence users to see. Uh, and the second one is anyone who can log into the service project. So any customer in the service project can see it. Um, this last option, which I didn't turn on exposes it, uh, to the entire internet. It's kind of like anonymous access. Um, and that, there's an important bit about search engines indexing it. That probably doesn't show up on the exam, but it's important to keep in mind that, you know, Google's search engine will find your articles if you turn that on. Uh, it's just the most permissive. So if I change that to all logged in users, I have another option under who can edit. And so these permissions, the ability to control who can see it and then who can edit, did pop up on my particular version of the exam. And I wasn't as well versed in controlling this. In environments that I work in, if you have a, if you have a Jira license, you tend to have a Confluence license. So it's never been a challenge. However, you might have environments where you have a lot of people just who are service project users, like agents, or you have, uh, external users that don't have, uh, Confluence access. So you need to tweak these. And again, the view permission also kind of controls the edit permission. You'll notice if only Confluence user is selected here, that's the only option I have for edit. But if I select all logged in users, I can also say service project users can edit articles. And again, this is over and above the Confluence license, so less restrictive. Uh, we can add new spaces just by clicking link and then just picking your space. Uh, and then at the bottom, we have the ability to control articles. Um, this is one that I could kind of guess my way through, uh, just based on context on the questions I happen to see. Um, but we do want to understand how we can limit what articles show up for which request types we have. So the list of request types is just based on the request types in the project. But we can disable suggested articles. And we can also restrict based on some kind of label. So maybe I only want articles that have the word account in them. And there is no label account. Uh, let's try a project. There we go. Maybe I only want articles of the label project to appear. I can limit that here. Yeah. So again, just configuring how the knowledge base, how the linked Confluence spaces share information. Uh, and then we can unlink, we can get rid of these as well if we want. All right, team. That was a lot of Rob talking. I gotta drink some delicious coffee. I'm also going to give a shout out to Chad, my first coffee sponsor. I have memberships on the channel now, so thank you Chad for helping me afford this beautiful, uh, Tassora blend from Phil's. But please take a minute, think up your questions, otherwise I'm just going to keep on chugging with what I think you will find interesting. Uh, where'd it go? Here we are. Um, right, this is right back to the Atlassian, uh, cloud, uh, certification prep resources. And again, I highly recommend checking this out. I'll see if I can just share this big old link. It's too long. Let me try it that way. There it is. That is a very long link. Um, and again, I spent the week before the exam going over this. And then if I couldn't explain the answer to myself, uh, I would note it. And then I would keep going and then come back to the things I couldn't explain and dig into those more. Um, this line I have, oop, and it's gone. Um, this line I happen to highlight, uh, the ability for queues is important. And it's just a subtle difference in permissions. If I go back to my project, I'll have this list of queues. Um, and queues are just a saved search essentially that show, uh, requests or, uh, work items. Uh, but they're not editable by agents. So if I'm an agent working on this, I can't, you know, add or remove columns. I can't change the underlying query that displays these tickets. I'm reliant on my project admin to do that. So project admins can come up and edit the queue. And they can do things like change the, the JQL query that defines the work items. Admins can do things like change the order that columns appear in. Um, ad, admins can do things like change any default sorting on it. Uh, and also do things like add them to priority groups. So priority groups are just a way to organize your queues. I have two examples in here, team priority and executive support. Um, but the thing to remember here is admins really have full control over the queue and agents are just kind of along for the ride. So if any modifications need to happen, you have to have project admin to do that. You can't just be an agent. Um, the, I, stop closing. Uh, this is another important call out, and this is something that I have seen in, uh, real world scenarios like, uh, pop-up where folks have service desk team member the role in a project, but they don't have the license. So we need to remember, uh, if we're in just Jira software and you have a license, you can kind of do everything. You need a separate license to go into Jira service management. Hey, Kaitr, good to see you. Um, so if I come into my project settings and I go back to my access and I go to people and access, I can click add people and I can give them a role, service desk team. This role gives them access to this project as a service desk team member. However, if they don't have a Jira service management license, they won't get access to the JSM features like SLAs, for example. So you can have one and not the other and not have enough access. If you have the license, but you aren't on the team, you'll be able to go into JSM, but you can't see the project. So it's possible to come in to see the project and not be able to do a lot of things. That's if you're missing the JSM license. Uh, and that can be confusing for organizations. Again, it's different than a Jira license. It's a different price point as well. Uh, so some, some orgs may be a little bit more restrictive with JSM access just because of that. Uh, continuing our theme, whoopsies. That's really annoying. Um, continuing our theme of access. Um, there is a customer portal access role. Um, and this is important, not just because Atlassian is calling it out, but again, I've seen in the wild, in the real world, uh, groups not provide this. Um, so customer permissions can be blocked or modified by project. So if we go in here and look at project permissions, we should get this huge, huge list of everything. Um, this intimidated me when I first saw it, just because there's a lot of stuff going on in here. Um, basically what we're seeing are groups of permissions, administrative permissions and the names of the permissions. And then a little description of what they do. And then it's permissions in the project and the name of the permission and kind of what they do. The right-hand column is the user or the group or the role that gets that permission. Excuse me. So if I come down to say assign issues, I said the word, didn't I? Hang on, I have to go find my, uh, yep, there we go. Five times. Oops, sorry Chad, didn't realize you were solo floating around up there. Uh, this is telling me that the ability to assign work items, uh, the project role administrator can do it, the project role service desk team, Atlassian add-ons, and also the project customer. So this is just informing me who can do what. Um, and it's interesting that service desk project customer shows up in so many different places. Like they can archive issues. Um, they can create. It's really mean of them to put that word on the page. Um, they can also create work items. There we go. So this is where we can define on the project level, who can do what. And this is where it's reminding us. Where'd my cheat sheet go? Um, customers can do things, but only if that role exists for that permission. So if you have questions around, why can't a customer do something? It's, it could be because you have to go configure project permissions and include service project customer portal access under that permission. This is also where individual projects can tweak their access. Um, now it is tied to a scheme though. So if you look up at the top, this is a shared scheme among different projects. Thank you, Tushar. I appreciate that. I tried to translate in my head and I just see that word everywhere. Um, uh, so this scheme is shared among projects. So this is where if you're just a project admin, you can't change it. You have to be, I believe, a site admin to go edit this permission and go tweak everything. Uh, now if you're playing around in here, it does have a bunch of callouts that are new or newer, um, just to help you understand what's going on. But I definitely recommend, you know, coming in here, taking a look at the permission helper. And this will help you understand who can do what. Um, so it's a way to analyze how does it work? Um, and that's actually pretty new as well. I keep forgetting it exists. Uh, but digging around in permissions is almost always worth your time because these, the challenges around permissions pop up pretty much everywhere. Um, and it's very confusing because if you look at this screen and don't know what's happening, like if you look at this and can't read it, it's really hard to help someone out. Um, but again, the, the call out here is that service project customer portal access role is what's granting the customer the ability to do something. So if you see questions around that, the answer might be something like configure customer portal access role. Uh, managing organizations, we briefly spoke Managing organizations, we briefly spoke about this at the start. But customers can be grouped into organizations and then we can allow customers the ability to traverse organizations or search within them to share requests. Uh, and this call out here, customers can always share requests with others in their organization. So that means if Kyther and Chad are in the same org, they can share requests. But unless it's configured to allow sharing outside of it, that has to be turned on. Managing team members, another call out on the license, just that's how important that is. Hey Frank, congratulations. Do I have my confetti? I don't know where my confetti went, but pretend there's confetti. Oh, here's some applause. That's great news, my friend. Congrats. Be curious Frank, if you can share in the chat what, what it was like and what things like surprised you or what topics maybe you, you can help others, uh, prep for that were surprising. Uh, that's kind of what we're going through right now. Issue level security. Issue level security is another topic that I am just familiar with. I've worked at organizations that use this extensively, but we can have another layer of permissions essential. See, it's just right there on the stupid screen. I don't think the counter's counting up, but I gotta keep, uh, keep myself honest. Work item level security, uh, is also something that lets us restrict work items. So we can use that to, uh, restrict what's going on. Uh, and not just at the project level. Uh, and then collabora-, uh, collaborators, collaborationers, excuse me. Collaborators are folks who are added to the work item. And I'll go find one real quick, just so we can see what this is. But it's essentially a customer sharing that request with someone else. Thank you, Justin. Yes, I am now at seven. We called seven and a half. Here I am on a request. So this is the customer facing part of the work item. Uh, and what we're looking for is this shared with. So this allows me to add a participant. Uh, you'll also see this referred to as a collaborator. And collaborators can do thing, oop, I lied. I'm thinking of something else. Let me back up. Collaborators are a project permission. Uh, under people and access. Oh, this doesn't have that role. Um, is it under? I think I need to go find a team managed project real quick. Let's try this little guy. Oh no. So we do have a PDF Frank that we're using, but it doesn't have links out to all of the resources. We've got the exam topics and this is what we've been pulling through today. But to your point, we don't have that easy list of links out to everything. Is it here? What I'm looking for is there's a specific role called collaborator. And so in our project, we'll have admins, we'll have, um, agents and agents can interact with customers. There is a third role though called collaborator. And this provides, uh, essentially only work item level access. So a collaborator can go in and see the work items, but they can't do customer facing actions on them. It's intended to be, let's say I'm a, a support rep and Frank is a, an expert in engineering. It's intended to allow Frank to come in and provide internal comments to kind of help me out. To let me know, hey, Rob, I've made this update or I've provided this thing for you. Go check this out. So it's a way to extend, uh, the team a bit without having to have so many agents, so many customer facing folks. So when you see collaborator pop up. Uh, just know that they have different capabilities than agents. Justin, I'll say even if the links are available on the, like archive, internet archive, it'll be for the old version of the exam. Cause the exam was updated in April and I don't think the new exam, uh, included them, so they might just not exist. I'm going to skip to agent facing features because this is something I tripped over. Agent facing features takes up a pretty good chunk of the exam. Let me go find it real quick. Agent. Facing, there we go. It's about 20% of the overall exam. So again, thinking through where do you want to spend your time? If you don't know where, this is a pretty meaty chunk, uh, that you should. Uh, spend more time in just because it's so much of the exam and one in five questions is probably going to relate to it. It's no guarantee, but most likely. Uh, there are some questions around like the softer skills. So not just how do you build a queue, but how do you consider building one? So when we take this exam, keep in mind, it's not just going to be a straight up, how do, which buttons do you push? It's going to be, how do you help the team understand what they are and how do you, uh, take what they're telling you and express that in Jira? Excuse me, for example, there may be questions around a team struggling to manage their work. What should you go help, you know, what should you talk about them, talk to them about to next? Excuse me, if I trip over my words. Or they have a, um, need to find certain requests, how do you help them find it? Uh, Frank, I completely agree that having the links in this document, um, was very useful. I'll see if I can hunt down anything, but I haven't seen, uh, any linked docs for the newer stuff yet. All right. So we'll talk a bit about queues and then we'll dig into SLAs. I did have some questions on SLAs. I happen to be familiar with them. They are something that project admins can do. Uh, and they are something that I was kind of abandoned. Uh, someone just gave to me and ran off. So I had to figure it out by doing so I'm more comfortable there. But they can be, again, a bit confusing. Queues, we briefly spoke about admins can edit, agents can use. So as an admin, I can control all of these. I can change the column order. I can change the, uh, JQL that writes to this. You can use the basic search, just as a reminder, I tend to default to the JQL, the JQL. That's just my habit. But anywhere you see this little rocker, basic or JQL, you can swap between them. Excuse me. Now, once I've got my queue set up, you'll see them on the left. Uh, and they'll be in the order that, under queue settings that they were put in. So in here I can change which groups they're in. I can go edit the queue itself and I can reorder it. And all of this is around, uh, improving my agents, uh, you know, quality of life, how they work. So here I want to talk to my agents and say, hey, Justin, I made this order for you. Does this make sense? Or hey, Justin, what do you think about it? Oh, I really hate that assigned to me is at the bottom. Can you put it at the top? That's more useful. So this is where knowing how to reorder them is important, but knowing why you want to reorder them and knowing how to work with your team and the impact it can have on their work is also incredibly important. Uh, the other feature in here are priority groups. I personally haven't used these yet, but you'll see on the, under queues, I've got groupings of queues. And so just another way to help my team by sorting and grouping information for them. So they can just go to executive support and see what's going on. Now on top of this, we also have our SLAs. Now, if I go into my project settings, I can get to my SLAs or service level agreements. These to me were very, am I going blind? Hang on. When I first learned about them, were a little bit intimidating just because I didn't know what they were. Am I going blind? We should charge Rob when he says JQL instead of JQL. I'm trying to make this a thing to pronounce JQL as JQL. So any help I can get. I'm pushing hard for this. I don't think it'll stick, but we'll see what we can do here. SLAs, there they are, hiding under request management. So service level agreements, uh, are basically timers on tickets. That's like the simplest way to think of them. They are agreements between organizations, typically between information technology and the customers on how long it takes to do a thing. That thing could be resolve the work item. That thing could be just respond to the ticket. Out of the box, I think time to resolution and time to first response are defaults. But this can be really confused, the concept of these can be really confusing. In each individual SLA will have a name and then it will have a goal. And the goal is, uh, what needs to happen? For example, if the ticket priority is critical, you get six hours, uh, to resolve it. So it's saying apply a goal to anywhere the status is open and then check the priority. Critical, you get six hours. Low, you get 60. Excuse me. One important thing about SLAs, you'll see it's got priority levels listed. There's an all remaining priorities. So there's a catch-all. If there's some other priority that isn't listed, it gets this one. And then at the bottom, there's almost always an all remaining issues. So if somehow a ticket doesn't have a priority, it's blank or that field is missing. It's going to get this last one of 80 hours. On the exam, you may get a screenshot of an SLA and be asked to interpret it. Or be asked to figure out when will this, uh, SLA kick in? Now the SLA that is applied is the first one that meets the criteria. So if I have a work item that has highest in the priority, it's going to look at critical, it'll hit highest and then it's going to stop. It won't keep evaluating. This is a simple example, but you may have more complex, uh, SLAs. Or you may have situations where multiple SLAs could apply to a work item. And then you're going to be asked which one will apply. So just remember, as you're reading these top to bottom, the first one that is true for that work item will be applied. It then stops. It doesn't keep, uh, analyzing. I do not Frank. IQL or JQL? There is another QL. We've got asset query language, AQL. Uh, and then there's also a CQL, a confluence query language, which are a little bit less common than our, our friend JQL. Now the other thing about SLAs we need to know is the conditions. So when does the timer start counting? When does this timer get paused and when does it stop? And these are important because they control when that clock is ticking. And this is where we need to work with our agents and our team to understand, okay, everyone, when the issue is created, this timer will start. But if you get stuck, if the work item is blocked or if it's in a waiting information state, then we'll pause it because it's not fair. And then once you set a resolution, then the timer stops. Setting a resolution can be confusing to folks. Many people believe that if the work item is in a done state, that that is the same as having a resolution. So I guess a quick question for folks. Uh, what's the difference between done and a resolution? So the done status and that done status could be completed, it could be done, it could be something else. But what's the difference between done and a resolution? And this is not just a academic question. This does impact us on the exam and as we use Jira. I can go in and edit these conditions. Uh, so if I edit this SLA, I can scroll to the bottom and I can add more conditions. There is a, a set list though. It's generally around the status, the work item is in. Or something like a due date or a signee. So I can't define a condition with something like JQL. I have to pick out of this list of items. And that can also frustrate people. Was that everything on SLAs? Yep, purpose of SLAs. Translating requirements again is talking to the customer or the team and understanding what needs to be happen. Thank you, Kyther. So this is a com- people commonly get these things conflated or mixed up or, uh, combined. But done is just the status in the workflow. The resolution is how it got done. For example, if I, uh, say I fix Ca-, uh, I fix Kyther's internet problem. I might move it to completed as the status and the resolution might be provided new hardware. If I fix Frank's internet, it might be completed. That's the status. And the resolution might be rebooted router. So the, the resolution is the reasoning behind it. Yep. The resolution defines what happened, how it was completed. You will commonly see groups have a number of statuses that are in the, uh, the done category that really should be resolutions. Now one call out, team managed projects make it more challenging to set a resolution. Typically need like an automation on a company managed project. When you close the work item, you should get a pop-up or like a modal window. Allowing the agent to select the resolution. Uh, so that is one difference I've seen people run into with a team managed side of the house. Oddly, I did not see many, if any, questions on the difference between team managed and company managed projects. I was expecting a lot more. Okay, turning off features. Who else is confused by features now? I'm kind of laughing. Uh, because it seems like half of what's available is now considered a feature. Uh, and this seems to be different. But in here we've got service request, you know, all the work categories. Customer service things, products, uh, operations. So there were some questions and do we need to understand what all the features are and how they differ? So it's things like, oh, there's a dedicated queue just for service requests. If I turn this on. Incident management gives me the on-call schedules. Problem management's going to give me problem logging and root cause analysis. So again, this, this for me is, I think it's newer. Um, I just don't recall seeing it all that much. But this is where we can flip on or off a lot of the different features. So there may be questions around what's going on here. Tushar, and that is a great argument for company managed pro-, uh, projects. Uh, because then they can't add the status. Frank, a little bit tongue in cheek, features are just another push to premium. That is an interesting point though, as we consider being Jira admins. Part of what we will have to do is advise our team on, hey, we don't really need this particular feature. We can do other things. Or we need to explain to them why we do or don't need it. So part of this, you know, learning the certification and learning Jira isn't just how to push the buttons or even why to push the buttons. It's helping our team understand the best way to use the tools we have. Or what else we get if we go up a tier and get a more expensive thing. So keep that in mind. Stuff like that probably doesn't show up on the exam, like in these exam topics. But understanding how to, you know, what they are and what our team gets if they get them is important. Going back to, whoop, wrong button. We took a look at SLAs. Please play around with SLAs if you aren't familiar with them. There are some questions around it. And again, they can be confusing to understand how the SLAs are applied and in what order, if you are unfamiliar with them. So it's just something that I happen to have a background in. It made it easier for me to interpret them. But take some time to look through them and I'll see if I can come up with some, uh, tricky examples that I can share over in Discord. Uh, if folks want to take a stab at those. Uh, we spoke a bit about assets and we had two sessions on this. I won't get too deep into them right now. Excuse me. But we should know, uh, the use cases and for the, through the lens of like JSM, the physical asset, all the laptops your company has is going to be kind of the default you're going to see. You might also see things around like buildings or facilities. But keep in mind that assets isn't just about tracking, hey, Rob has this computer. It can also be used to help the finance team. You can see it called out right here, financial reporting. So the assets module gives us more than just how many laptops do we have? It lets us know how much money they're worth, which can make it easier for the finance team to do things. We also need to understand that assets can be connected to work items. Oop, come back. There were questions as well about interpreting the object graphs. So if I come back in here and I look for my assets. Uh, what's the big one? 131, there we go. There were questions that just had a picture like this and it said, explain the relationship between, you know, rooms and fire extinguishers. And I just had to go, okay, kind of look at it and figure it out. When I took the exam, I had never used assets, so that made these questions a little bit more fun. And this was a good example. And this was a good example of a question you can kind of logic your way through. You can sit down and kind of figure out, there's a thing called a fire extinguisher. The arrow is pointing at rooms. And it kind of makes sense that a fire extinguisher would be in a room. A room wouldn't be in a fire extinguisher. So what does that tell me about how these things relate? So if you are less familiar with assets. Definitely get hands on in a demo instance. There's also some other great live learnings on assets. I think there were just two in the past month or so. But there were several questions that I got on assets that I had to essentially guess. Which isn't the best feeling, but again, because of how it looked and how it was set up. I was able to kind of figure out what the answer was. Not much time left. Nine minutes. What other specific topics? Do you all want me to dig into while we're here together? I'm going to go customer facing features because that's a good, another fifth of our exam. And I'll go find it in our PDF right here. So again, if you're looking for an area to dig into, section four, the customer facing features is probably a good one, just given the amount of stuff. Request types are a big part of JSM because that is how a customer interacts and kind of puts things in. So they live under request management. And. I'm just going to go create one and I gotta go blank. So through creation on the right, we'll see what the customer sees and I'll call this something like JQL request. Ooh, that's a good one, Frank. I'll get to that in just a second. I'll put this in a portal group. So this just makes it easier on the front end. And then I have to tie it to one and only one work item type. I will not say that word. So one thing to keep in mind is every request type is connected to one and only one work item type. Work item types can have zero or many request types tied to it. In a team managed project, the request type is the work item type. It's just the same thing. In a company managed project though, when you create the request type, you'll have to tie it to one work item type. Now Frank is asking portal facing. Status names. So by default. This work item has a workflow and I'll show it right here. And this is what has been defined in the workflow scheme. So this workflow is shared by multiple projects or can be. And this allows me to set it up across all of Jira. So in this case, to do in progress and done are my statuses. I might not want to show that to a customer though. For example, if there's a blocked status, maybe I want to call it something else. Right up here, there's a workflow statuses tab and this lets me rename it. And maybe I call these something different. The only thing this does is change it on the portal. So when the customer goes and looks at their work item. This is what they're going to see instead of the workflow status name. So if I were to put in a request type, instead of seeing in progress, I would see working on it, smiley face. Instead of seeing done, I'd see completed, et cetera. This is a way to make the portal more user friendly. So when someone comes in, they'll see something that makes more sense to them. Especially with bigger workflows. Or in instances where the status makes sense, again, in progress, but it maybe isn't as nice for the customer to see that. How do we define which fields are visible to customers? So on the request type, I've got the request form, the issue view and the workflow statuses. The request form is what customers will see. So these fields, instructions and summary. The issue view is. Hang on. Justin, that's up to nine, right? My little counter doesn't work. The work item view is where the, you'll define what the agent sees. And you'll see that there's a lot more fields. We've got like description fields and this context field has a lot of stuff. If I look at the request form, I won't see all of those. I only see these two that I want the customer to see. Is that what you were looking for, Susanna? Now I can build out these views. So I can add maybe due date. Nope, I can't add that here. It's, it's already on the issue view. Okay. Maybe I'll let the customer set a due date. And with these fields, I can rename what is displayed to the customer. So in this case, the field in Jira is called due date, but I can have the customer see something like, when would you like this? And so this again, makes it more user friendly. So we can think of like the display name and the system name is one way to think of it. Or the public name and the internal name. But we can change what the customer sees on the request type. We can control which fields are displayed. Oh, sorry, Susanna. Thank you. We can control which fields are displayed and we can even control what they are called and that's by project. So one project might call it, when would you like this? Another project can call it something else. But when I use JQL to find it, I look for due date. When my agents look at work items, they know look for due date. And again, this will be something that I need to work with my team to understand. What kind of information do we need to gather from customers? And I need to work with my customers to figure out, hey, what should this be called? What's the most user friendly thing that makes the most sense for you? This is something I constantly work, excuse me, on with teams that use JSM. Because it's so important to set up the team for success by gathering the appropriate information and things that they'll need. Okay, we are, and thank you for jumping in and helping out Frank, Susanna. We are very near our time limit for the end of this. I do need your help. I'm constantly looking for feedback on making these sessions better. I have a load of ideas for the next ACP and I'll talk about which one that is in a moment. But if you have a moment, this QR code goes to a Google form and I'll share that as a nice short link in here as well. But anything at all you think that I could do better here, I could make this more approachable, et cetera. Please let me know because I want to make sure these sessions are as valuable to you as they have been to me, if not more. So any ideas at all, please share if you're comfortable. I do have a ticketing system course over on Udemy. This isn't, this isn't ACP 420 training. This is more intended for someone who's like brand new to ticketing systems and the concept and idea of them. To give them all the skills that I kind of wish I had when I started. So I'll drop a link to this QR code, which is a discount code in the chat if you're interested or if you have team members who might benefit. This will give you a great foundation to start building those concepts and ideas around. How do I knowledge, how do I ticketing system? How do I build one? And our next ACP is the 520. All these numbers are getting mixed up. In my head. So we're going to start the 520 and again, this will be in two weeks. So next Monday, I will not be live. I will be preparing for this. Based on what I've learned through this experience. I had a lot of fun. Well, we're not done, Justin. I'm just explaining it's only one week. I had a lot of fun with this series. I've really enjoyed it. It inspired me to start doing the ACA trainings on Fridays. And there's been three or four cycles of that. But the 520 is going to start in two weeks. So that's going to be July 6th or 7th. And I plan to have that be a lot more organized and hopefully a lot better focused and a lot more interesting. So I'm not going to show that because that data is wrong. But between now and then, please keep studying, get hands on, keep talking to people. Jump into the Elasian community. Join us over on that Discord server, which I think the link broke, so I'll have to go find a new one. And again, that Discord server isn't just for studying for exams. It's for sharing information about Elasian and meeting other people who are like minded. So you can use that link for the Discord. I also have channel memberships. You'll notice that my friend Chad has a different looking username and a little star. Excuse me. He is the first coffee sponsor for the channel. So a huge thank you, Chad. But if you want to support what I'm doing, that's a great way. To become a member of the channel, you also get access to some things like some fun little emojis and also my videos in advance. So you'll see all the, the pre-recorded stuff available before everyone else. Kari, you're very welcome. I do want to thank you all again. It's been 14 weeks of. Interesting, interesting stuff and fun. I certainly learned a lot about the 420, but it was good to think through, how do I help other people? So thank you all for joining me on this. I'm going to keep the chat open, but please keep dropping. Please keep dropping questions. I'll leave the chat open for a few minutes, but thank you all for joining me on this learning adventure. I really enjoyed the 420 and I'm looking forward to the 520 starting in two weeks. So I'll leave the line open for a bit, drop any questions you have. And I'm looking forward to seeing you in hopefully less than two weeks. Justin, you are welcome. Glad you are here, my friend. Yeah, I wouldn't, I can't, we got to get our Monday fix. I am not Elasian certified expert. That requires four of the ACPs. I only have one right now. I intend to get there, but I'm going to do one ACP at a time. And that's so I have time to study and do other things, but also I can keep doing these live learnings. Separately, I'm working my way through the ACA, the associate levels on Fridays. Feel free to join me there. We're just wrapping up Elasian Cloud foundations and we'll be starting. The associate version of this actually in a week, which is the ITSM and Jira service management. Alright folks, unless there's other questions, thank you all again for joining me. Looking forward to hearing about your success on the exam, if you choose to take it. And seeing you in our next live session, which will be in two weeks on the ACP 520. So thank you all. Have a great day, morning, evening, wherever you are, and I'll see you again soon.